Welcome everyone to the regular scheduled city council meeting for Wednesday, August 20th, 2025. Let the record show all councils are present with the exception of Councillor Hildebrand and Councillor Whitney. At this time, we'll do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We move on to adds and deletes. Adds consent agendas number 12 and number 17, adds department committee reports number 2B, 4A and 5A. Could I have approval of the agenda?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councillor Schweiger. Support by Councillor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion carries. Approval of minutes. I want to approve the minutes of Hibbing City Council meeting, August 6th, 2025. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion for Councillor Hoffman-Sockman. Support by Councillor Schweiger. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion carries. To approve the minutes of the Hibbing City Council workshop of August 6th, 2025. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councillor Fossil. Support by Councillor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion carries. Move on to the consent agenda. One, approve the council payroll dated August 14th, 2025, checks number 1-80708-1-80826 and drafts an amount of $3,661,174.41. Two, approve the city payroll ending August 8th, 2025, an amount of $709,327.72. Three, authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend a public meeting for US Steel Corp. KeyTAC draft permits and variance requests at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center on Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Four, authorize the hire of Adam Holm for full-time investigator to position effective December 22nd, 2025. Five, authorize posting of three temporary library aides for the Hibbing Public Library. Six, authorize the hire of Timothy Stoddy for full-time commander with the Hibbing Police Department effective August 25th, 2025. Seven, authorize the hire of Michaela Shearer, our temporary animal care attendant pending pre-employment contingencies. Eight, authorize the mayor to sign and send a Northeastern Mayor's letter in support of KeyTAC site-specific standard and variance. Nine, approve of Resolution 25-08-10 calling on Northern Natural Gas to employ Minnesota workers in opposed rate increases resulting from out-of-state contracting. Ten, approve the raffle permit application request to the Hibbing Chisholm Youth Hockey to hold a raffle on Friday, February 6th, 2026 at Palmer's of Hibbing. Eleven, approve the raffle permit application request to the Hibbing College Foundation to hold a raffle on Friday, December 19th, 2025, in Minnesota North College Hibbing Campus. Twelve, approve the raffle application request of Minnesota Deer Hunters Association to hold a raffle at the Hibbing Moyer Building on Wednesday, October 1st, 2025. Approve thirteen, approve the on-off sale and Sunday liquor license application of Station 73, 2612, Highway 73 Hibbing. Fourteen, approve the special event permit application of the Hibbing Chisholm Hat Trick Hustle 5K on Saturday, October 11th, 2025, starting at the Fairgrounds Arena. Fifteen, approve the Hibbing Police Department July 2025 activity report. Sixteen, approve the special event permit of Hibbing bar owners to hold Oktoberfest on Saturday, September 20th, 2025. Seventeen, approve the temporary on-sale liquor license of the following establishments to sell alcohol during Oktoberfest in downtown Hibbing. One Sammy's Pizza, two The Iron House, three The Do U's, four Checos, five Palmer's of Hibbing, six Mike's Pub, seven Sportsman's Restaurant and eight Boomtown. Eighteen, set the next Hibbing City Council meeting for Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025 at 3:00 PM in the City Hall Council Chamber. And nineteen, set the next Hibbing City Council workshop meeting following the regular city council meeting at 3:00 PM in the City Hall Council Chambers. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and published.
We have a motion by Councillor Hoffman-Sockman. Support? Support by Councillor Schweiger. Any discussion? Yes, Councillor Fossil.
I see we have that next scheduled meeting for September 3rd at 3:00 PM?
Correct.
I don't think I'll be able to make it there that early.
Okay. We have the Iron Trail regarding permitting for KeyTAC.
Correct.
And we've got to make sure we have support there for that very important meeting. Okay. Thank you for that. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion carries. At this time, we move on to public forum. And first, for a public forum will be Orin Paplica. This is Orin. Orin, when you come up, the two things I need for anybody that comes, it's a five-minute timeframe. Please state your name and what your address is. And then, you're ready to start, I'll put up one finger when we're down to one minute.
I'm going end to end. I was expecting 10 minutes from the last council meeting. I apologize for that. Good evening, councilperson. This is Mr. Mayor. My name is Orin Falco. I live at 1833 East 27th Street.
Thank you.
I have been a homeowner here for four years, but I'm a lifelong resident of the Hibbing area. Raised in Side Lake. For over a year now, the Hibbing Police Department's official Facebook page has operated in a manner that, in my view, contradicts the oath of office as officers took. The department has removed the public's ability to comment on all of their posts, effectively silencing the voices of the very people they serve. This is not a trivial manner. This is not internet etiquette or managing spam. This is about the deliberate suppression of public speech in a publicly controlled forum. It is a digital equivalent of locking the doors to a town hall meeting and posting a sign outside that says, "No questions, please." I want to be clear, I have not come here lightly. I have made repeated respectful attempts to resolve this matter through the appropriate channels. I have asked the police department to reinstate public commenting rights, and I have appealed to their better judgment, to their commitment to accountability, to the oath they swore. I've even contacted the ACLU, recognizing that they are overwhelmed and cannot respond to every single request. Despite this, their silence speaks volumes. And while to some this may appear to be a minor grievance, just a few missing comment boxes on Facebook page, this issue is anything but trivial. The erosion of constitutionally protected rights rarely begins with grand sweeping gestures. It begins with small exceptions, quiet omissions, justifications made in the name of convenience or decorum. We must be vigilant, especially in our smallest acts of governance, because history has shown us, time and time again, that rights surrendered quietly are rarely reclaimed easily. The First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States is not a suggestion. It's not a courtesy only to be extended when convenient. It's a non-negotiable promise, a covenant between the government and the governed. And when a public agency using public funds creates a social media page to deliver public information, that page becomes a public forum. The courts have been abundantly clear on this matter. In Davison versus Randall, for instance, the Fourth Circuit Court ruled a public official cannot block or silence citizens from commenting on a page simply because they disagree with what's being said. That principle doesn't vanish at the city limits. It applies here in Hibbing just as much as it does in any other city. This matters deeply to me because Hibbing is not just where I live, it's where my family lived, it's where my daughter may live one day. I walk the same streets as my grandparents, I attend the same festivals, shop in the same stores. Generations of my family lie in the ground, and it is my hope that generations yet unborn will call Hibbing home. But that requires more than paved roads and police cruisers. It requires trust, and trust requires dialogue, even when that dialogue is difficult. So tonight, I just ask you to act, not symbolically, not passively, but with principle. I ask that you hold the police department to the same standard of openness that we demand of any other public institution. I ask that you require public comment access be restored to their official Facebook page. It's not about encouraging disrespect or instability. It is about ensuring that the public has a right to speak in any public forum, and that right does not vanish when it becomes inconvenient. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your commitment to ensuring Hibbing remains a place where every voice, whether agreeable or uncomfortable, has a right to be heard.
Thank you, Orin. Very well spoken. It's, as you know, we can't act as a council on open forum. Andy, I guess the only thing I would say based on what I heard, unless you can respond to this, I guess we would look to legal as far as what we can and can't do on Facebook pages.
I believe we actually, we may have been in contact.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll speak to the chief and to Ms. Grinsteiner with respect to the Facebook page that the gentleman is referring to. Okay?
All right. Very good. Orin, thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you.
At this time, we have Jeremy. And Jeremy, you know the protocol, so just state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes. I'll put a finger up, and as soon as you start, I'll start to clock.
My name is Jeremy Tyson. I live at 4129 12th Avenue East in Hibbing. Last time I was here, I spoke a little bit to some flooding issues we have along the 41st Street corridor. I kind of wanted to, and I know this is informational for you guys, you spoke of the League of Minnesota Cities being the insurance company, and we're welcome to file claims. I have just received two denial letters, again, trying to reopen these. And this one, I did send them the candy. She will get them to you at a later date. But this one states that for the city to be negligent, the flooding and subsequent damage must be caused by the city's failure to exercise ordinary and reasonable care in the construction, maintenance and inspection of its system. Investigation into your loss determines no such stormwater diversion system is located at or near your property. So, we happen to know that over 800 acres of stormwater is directed to this stream or creek that goes through my property, and they're denying me insurance claims based on this, saying that that's not a stormwater runoff system. So, you can see why we're up against the wall, why we're irritated, upset, coming and talking to you guys. I just want you to understand that we did go through the proper channels. We are trying to file claims with the insurance, and they're hands down fighting us. In retrospect, to the other letter that Candy will get you, there's, he makes reference to the sewer system being maintained, so that, you know, they're not going to pay any claims due to the backup. But with the date of that storm, the lift pumps down 41st Street were down. And I believe that that is the reason that caused that backup at that time. I don't know if it was something that was not supposed to be said, but it was a Public Works employee that said it in front of me, that the pumps were down. So, you know, I'm not saying that the city owes me money, but I do feel like that the insurance company should be paying these claims that are put in. And, I mean, I didn't put in any astronomical claim. I just want my furnace changed. You know, I had to pay out of my pocket to replace my furnace, and I really shouldn't have if it was truly that the pumps were down, caused the backup in the area. So, I mean, it's going to take some due diligence and some more digging on my behalf to prove that. But I feel like you guys should know that the insurance is turning down claims on basis is that, you know, it's basically an opinion of them, that, you know, they're saying that the stormwater is not directed through where it is directed through, and they're saying that everything was maintained. Well, if the pumps went down, I'm not saying that they weren't maintained, but there's a reason that the pumps went down, whether they're inundated with water or whatever. The pumps being down being the cause of the backup, the insurance should have covered the damages for that. So, I guess that's kind of where I'll leave it. And I do, I do want to tell in front of everybody here, because the BDIO actually cut it off. I did mention, Mr. Fossil and Mr. Bayless did come out and take a look at the ditch amongst other issues I'm having with some contractors that's on the Public Works end of things. I do appreciate they took the time to come and take a look, and they spent some time looking and having some conversations with us, and that was very appreciated. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeremy. Jesse, I guess I'll, if you don't mind, I'll turn to you. We can't, again, make a decision here, but just for informational sake, do you know if the 41st Street lift station was down?
I'm Mayor Council. What I understand, the power did go out at the lift station, but we had a backup generator brought there. So, I'd have to find out how long it was down for, but I don't know that offhand.
Okay.
That particular incident was in 2022, and so it was some time ago, but I can get you a better date and information for actually looking that stuff up.
I thought all our lift stations had backup generators?
No, we have a few of them that we, we have a portable generator to bring there. Yes, we don't have backup generators on all of them, just because there's not room to put a GenSet.
Okay. All right. The one other question I had was the acres that I think Mr. Tyson had said 800 acres. What, is that accurate?
Mayor Council, yes, that is accurate. Those numbers were pulled from the BAR study that was done in 2009. So, that is accurate. That's the area north of the highway in Homakers.
And I see BAR is on for tonight to do some engineering for addressing your issues. So, all right. Any other questions? Then we'll move on. At this time, Mr. Hoploff, Jay, I appreciate you being. If you would just introduce yourself and the organization.
Great. Thanks, Mayor. Hi to you, council members and staff. My name is Jay Hopella, and I work for AARP here in Minnesota. AARP is a membership organization. We work on behalf of people over the age of 50 and those who will be someday, looking out for people's wellness and financial security and creating communities that are supportive and inclusive of older adults, especially as the, as people are living longer and a higher percentage of Hibbing residents are over the age of 65, over the age of 85, compared to the past. So, that's good news. People are living longer. Hibbing's always been a great place to live and work and raise a family, and it's different today than it was years ago, perhaps, when your family started here. I just looked it up, and according to my online search, about 22%, 23% of your residents are over the age of 65 now. And if you're like other iron-ridden cities, 50 years ago, that was more like 10% or less. So, you just have a lot of older residents compared in the past, and those are the type of people who are AARP members and who we work on behalf of. We run a program called the Network of Age-Friendly Communities that provides technical assistance and resources to communities who join that network and make a commitment. Joining the AARP Network of Age-Friendly Communities is not sort of a stamp of approval. Instead, it's a commitment that you've already made. So, back in April of this year, you, the city council, approved an application to join the AARP network, and you're now members. So, I'm here to congratulate you and thank you for joining with us. I'm joined by members of your local committee here. So, Amy Brownell from St. Louis County and Miriam Kiro, who is a resident here locally, along with Ann Bussie, and Georgia Lane, who's with the area, she knows it's a tongue twister. She just says everything. The Arrowhead Area Agency on Aging. And they are here to work with you, to work with AARP, and uncover the ways that Hibbing can continue to be a great place to live for people of all ages. So, again, thanks for your commitment. We're at your service and working with your committee here, and we look forward to it going forward. We'd love to take a picture with you. If we could approach you, or if you would gather with us, we'd love to take a quick picture. So, who would be able to...
Very good. I would like the whole council that's here to accept that. That's fine? Yeah. Do we want us to just walk in front? You can come around, or?
That'd be great.
Okay. Yeah.
And the plaque reads, "This certifies that the city of Hibbing, Minnesota, has committed to becoming more age-friendly under the criteria established and has been accepted as a member of the AARP Network of Age-Friendly States and Communities." So, thank you again.
All right. Thank you. How are you doing? Jay, thank you so much for that presentation and for our group that's working on the AGH. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to department committee reports. And first off is City Commissioner, Mr. Prusinski.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, nothing from my office this evening.
Nothing? All right. Very good. At this time, we'll move on to community development director, Ms. Solavanti.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, my first item is a request to approve the transfer of $500,000 from the Undesignated Fund to, undesignated amount in the general fund to the Land Acquisition Fund for purchase of 3911 and 3909 Dillon Road. This is part of the 2023 Strategic Plan for a Vibrant Economic Hub and suffices for High Priority Goal Number Five, acquiring more property for economic development. The land fund balance is approximately $120,000 at present, and in order to purchase this property for the negotiated price and meet our commitments for the remainder of the Nortech property, these additional funds are required to be transferred into the account.
Okay. So, what we're looking for is a motion, approve transfer of funds from the Undesignated General Fund to the Land Acquisition Fund. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councillor Hoffman-Sockman. Support?
Support.
Support by Councillor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion carries. B, Betsy?
Excellent. This is a request to approve Resolution 250811 to approve the purchase of 3911 Dillon Road, Hibbing, Minnesota, 55746, and adjoining parcels 139005004362 and 139005004330. This is towards the 2023 Strategic Plan's core strategy of vibrant economic hub with diverse types of industry, providing local jobs and destination for shopping and dining, and also High Priority Goal Number Five, as addressed already, for the addition of property for economic development. Let's see. The purchase agreement has been negotiated for the appraised value of $410,000, along with half of the cost, or $19,612.50 of the replacement of the septic system if required. As the inspection was done in July of 2025, we have until July of 2027 to replace the septic system if the city council so chooses to do that piece and then sell off that house.
Very good. Hearing what Ms. Solavanti had to say regarding the property of 3911 Dillon Road. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councillor Bayless. Support by Councillor Schweiger. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Along with what Ms. Solavanti brought up in that resolution, there's also a provision in there that it would, the city council would be waiving referring this to the planning commission per the comprehensive plan. Instead, that would be waived, and the city would just simply proceed with the proceeding in this particular case. It would only be, in this case, where this plan is for this eventually, at least portions of it, to be commercially developed. But that is also within that resolution. It requires a two-thirds vote of the council. So, the five of you that are here tonight would have to approve that.
So, would that be an amendment, or just, you're just giving an understanding?
That's, that's within the resolution already, that supplement was submitted today.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, one final note. The closing would be on September 8th. That's probably another detail that...
Okay. Very good. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Solavanti. Now, we'll move on to three, Finance Director, Treasurer, Sheena Mullner.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This evening, I'm offering Resolution Number 25-08-12 for the Minnesota Department of Public Safety Grant Funding Assistance for the Hibbing Public Safety Building Project. We are working with the Department of Public Safety on entering into our grant agreement, which they will be administering our $10 million cash allocation grant from the 2023 legislative session for the construction of the Public Safety Building. In order for the state to encumber the funds and authorize the grant agreement, we need to provide proof that the project is fully funded. The Finance Committee is recommending to use the $10 million towards the construction of the building, which aligns with the GMP Forbidden Package Number Two in the amount of $29,829,266. $19,600,000 of the funding would come from our local sales tax authorization, $10 million from the state appropriation, and then, per this resolution, we would be committing $229,266 from the city's general fund. We would still have the option to issue general obligation bonds for that as well, if we would like to move forward with that. I'm asking for council to approve the resolution to show full funding of the project.
Okay. Hearing what Ms. Mullner had to say regarding Department of Public Safety Grant Funding Assistance. Wish of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councillor Schweiger. Support. Support by Councillor Bayless. Any discussion or questions for Ms. Mullner? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Sheena.
Thanks, Mayor.
This time, we move on to City Attorney, Mr. Barlin.
Mayor, the council also within your package this evening is Resolution 250813, which would waive the planning commission's review of Hibbing Economic Development Authority's sale of the real property at 111 7th Avenue East here in Hibbing. It's, people might know it as the old Bidavick Building. There's been a purchase agreement negotiated with Yoder to sell that property from EDA to Yoder. Because of our comprehensive plan, conveyances by the city and/or purchases need to be approved by, applied through the planning commission, or the city council can waive that. We have an anticipated closing date of the end of this month, and previously, HEAT has already had a public hearing with regard to this and approved this going forward. It still needs the council's approval either to waive that referral to the planning commission or refer it to them. This is a resolution that would waive that referral.
Okay. Hearing what Mr. Attorney had to say regarding the property of 111 17th Avenue East, authority HEAT to sale of real property. Wish of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councillor Hoffman-Sockman. Support?
Support.
Support by Councillor Fossil. Any other discussions for Mr. Barlin or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion carries. Five, we move on to Building Inspector Official, Mr. Green.
Mayor and council, this is an intermuse request for a home business for ATV sales repairs and part sales business on the subject property on Town Line Road. A home business is a minor commercial use. It has to be on the property that you live at, and it has to be zoned correctly, which this is. All parts and material will be stored in a building on the property, and the planning commission recommended approval to the council.
Okay. Hearing Mr. Green had to say regarding a quest of Cole Skobill to allow operation of a home power support business, already supported. Wishes of council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councillor Fossil.
I'll support.
Support by Councillor Bayless. Any other discussion? So, planning and zoning is fine. You said it falls within the right zoning...
Correct.
Very good.
Yep.
Thank you, Pat. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Pat. This time, we move on to bids and quotes. City Engineer, Mr. Storey.
Mayor Council, attached is a proposal from BAR Engineering to clean the stormwater conveyance system out south of 41st Street. This includes about 3,500 feet of ditching just past Jack and Don's. The proposal includes a wetland delineation permitting... The proposal includes a wetland delineation permitting assistance, post-stormwater model, planned specs and bidding assistance, pulls on the amount of thirty-six thousand dollars, and we're hoping to do this work this coming winter.
Okay. All right, we have a proposal by Mr. Storey from bar engineering to prepare plans for the Forty-first Street issue, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless. Support by Councilor Swiberger. Any questions? Jesse, what, at what point will we have, we're planning on winter, winter work, will we have a number that we'll be approving to move this work forward?
We're looking at early fall, so I'm thinking about end of September and October, shouldn't take him very long, they already have everything surveyed.
They have the original plan, too?
Yep, they have the original plan, so they just have to get the bidding documents together. And we want to do a post-model, so they'll do a model, so once all the ditches are cleaned, so we can see what the water is doing.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good, any other questions? Hearing none, we have first and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. B, Jesse.
Mayor, council, a check valve's on the South Hughes Road lift station by the airport field. This caused the pumps to run continuously, which caused one of our pumps to fail. We did have a spare pump that was put in there, we need to change both check valves and the gate valves. Attached is a quote from electric pump for twenty-five thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars to do this work. We have scheduled this work because it does need to be done. We'll include a total rebuild of this lift station in the two thousand and twenty-six budget.
Okay. Hearing what Mr. Storey had to say regarding electric pump quote for the South Hughes Road lift station, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman, support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Fosso. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. At this time, I'll ask for adjournment.
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Swiberger. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you.[1767.61]